Thank you very much.
Reale baha baha iso.
Do me langa pe baha it.
Greetings once more.
My name is Ntibimudise.
Elina lamekin Tivimudise.
I am a member of parliament.
Kilelo kola parlamente.
I am the chairperson of the portfolio committee of forestry, fisheries and environment.
Uh, kilelo kola portfolio committee ya diwa tsharo ya di kha pimoholo tiko loho.
Agi to urki zoga.
I don't know where I hail from.
Uh, marikar ki zogoh outing ekar.
But I think, it seems like I'm coming from Haute. Apparently.
Nagongu ki zamo tlekstop.
Sometimes I find myself to be coming from tlekstop.
Uh, temo Alabama.
Uh, rache in Alabama.
Herr gentlemen, sekangele ni sini.
Alukonukumpona marolona kant.
La lakonakumpona ne?
Can you see that in me?
Is there anyone who knows Nelson Street?
Akonale opoyo isimila wa Nelson.
You know number 14 Nelson Street?
Uh, number 14 Nelson Street, 14.
Yeah, you must go and ask them there.
Oye ochu babosa kote.
Yeah. Ki zoda?
Yep. Ki zako te.
Yeah, examo jo.
Eka hobolel.
Yeah. Yeah, ki iti liko okni.
I even know okni.
Ki itiko tichani.
And itichani.
Ki itiko kuma.
I know kuma.
Lika mo jobe tina ka.
And rache i jobe tien.
Marjelekan wormos vanitala.
Lakona huka bu akers.
La uka ne?
Temo huki buankwana langu karkia di si ripleket.
Ki so.
Ne? Ki ri tuvi.
Ki ri tuvi le ne? Good. Okay. We are a committee of parliament.
So re committee ya parlamente.
We are in a quest and a journey.
So remoli to laho batalanale tseri musai.
We are consulting the people of South Africa.
Uh, re batala ma ikuto abato ba Afrika Borua.
Because we want to pass a piece of legislation called Climate Change Bill.
Ka honne rabata ho fitisa e mala choma oru bita hori kwa di peto ho ya manualo api hori innemula.
But we don't want to sit in Cape Town and take decisions that affect the people of tlekstop without consulting them.
Me harabata honakoo Cape Towno ridira di tshwezo kwanke kapato bava le muhulonamo meresata ho buka pele horo naluare.
We started this journey in Mpumalanga.
So resimulizele tolela ronako Mpumalanga.
We went to northwest, uh, we went to Limpopo.
Re deria ko Limpopo.
We went to Kwa Zulu Natal.
Raya ko Kwa Zulu Natal.
We went to Mpumalanga.
Maro hamo raya ko Mpumalanga.
We went to Haute.
Re deria Haute.
Now we are in the northwest.
Ya no rebobu ko nibu pirima.
From here we will go to the eastern cape.
Khotshafano ya eastern cape.
Northern cape.
And northern cape.
Free state.
Erberia free statha.
And end in the western cape.
Eraho kone la ko kapabu pirima.
This is not our meeting.
Uh, kopano e kasi ya rona.
This is your meeting.
Jekopano ya loona.
We want you to speak to us about climate change.
Rabata hori lubuisane luro nakaha peto ho ya ma emo aluapi.
How it affects you.
Hori elo ama jan.
The floods.
Uh, merualela.
The rising sea levels.
Ho tshakshokaha mawate.
The droughts.
Edikomelelo.
And everything else that has to do with weather.
Lidilo so tshetse di we tshedi amanale ma emo abosa.
Lilo wapi.
Uh, tshedi amanale ma emo aluapi.
Lo hori ala affecta ya.
As to how do these affect you?
And what do you think we must do?
Le horu laakanya horu tshonituku dira in.
To set up systems that will mitigate.
Ho thoma di tamae tseka tshonarekati san tara bololo.
Or systems that will deal with adaptation.
Ho tadi tamae tseka le hori di kha diratela ya hori tibukele ma emo ano jan.
So we want you to speak to us about that.
Kajal rabata hori innelona lubuana lero naka kasiyo.
Akirka wadilithali nyalo.
So you are not told that you are coming to the wedding, were you?
Or bali razi kanyal.
Or did they say to you that I'm getting married?
Ngai nza ring ya ilu horu kunalo ring.
I can remove this ring if anybody...
Re okimu komishinaro.
Uh, this man here is a commissioner.
Yeah, kara signingsa piki fru.
He can just maybe take us down for signing, just now.
Uh, we can arrange a wide wedding a bit later.
Re kandara rula kanyaza eh nyalo ya musosomusue yuma ra konya.
Is there anybody who's ready?
Akonale bo ngoyo pa kanyasa hori konya.
Are you ready? Sit there, sharp. See me after this meeting. All right? Okay. Now, let me introduce these beautiful ladies and gentlemen in front of you.
Ereki luitishe hori kiki bomangba kinali bone fano faba banthe baba bo kehang bo meli borra.
And oh, ki batarbashebe biluskava ito loga kain.
Okay.
Yeah. Kina ela akikona kubu asitsoana, but wa lepa shibili ngapi lewa akabo utu sip. Skavato loga diuti. Eh, yanu ngaraba ki batarba bubure. Langu kdo mos? Udo soana ra? Oh. Yanu ki batarba bubure, ribu asitsoana sisi muteng teng 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 teng. Akir. Yeah. Anzurutu lapele kya horu taluseta hori, kubira ra obereka ya. Ne?
So, as we continue, I will then let you know how the process is going to continue.
Right. On my left is Honorable Mthunu.
Ki mototere Mthunu kafa mo leme ngoame.
Honorable Mthunu comes from Kwa Zulu Natal.
Uh, mototere Mthunu ozoa ko Kwa Zulu Natal.
She's a member of parliament, a member of this committee.
Kilelo kola parlamente ibile kilelo kola committee eno.
Honorable Mthunu.
Uh, Mthunu.
And on my right is Honorable Ganjo.
Kafa mo jenwa me ki mototere Ganjo.
Honorable Ganjo comes from the eastern cape.
So, ene ozoa ko eastern cape?
She's a member of parliament and a member of this committee.
Ki loko la parlamente ibile kape kilelo kola committee eno.
Oh, I forgot to tell you, Honorable Ganjo can hear Africans, ne?
Ki lebe tsolebelela horo ochona huka Afrikanse mototere Ganjo.
So please don't go, if you want to gossip, don't gossip in Africans.
Alabata homoseba le skela bua Africans.
Van Sichanon's war.
Ta horu ta luka.
Then on the far right is Honorable Damine.
Kamu kaku mo jongo kakala ki mototere Damine.
Honorable Damine comes from Haute.
Uh, mototere Damine ozoa ko Haute.
He's a member of parliament and a member of this committee.
Kilelo kola parlamente loko la committee eno.
Um, in our committee were quite many.
Re banzi to ta motenha committee ya rona.
Uh, but we have received apologies due to unforeseen circumstances.
Me honale bago baka ilen horu bakasini tengan klaya ma emo aning asalebe loa pele.
We have received the apology of Honorable Mbata.
Uh, isabolilele sejalu ki mototere Mbata.
Honorable Mbata is from Haute.
Mototere Mbata ozoa Haute.
She's also a member of this committee.
Le ne kilelo kola committee eno.
We have received an apology of Honorable Holomisa.
Yo akailen horu kasinini tengi mototere Holomisa.
He comes from the eastern cape and a member of parliament and a member of this committee.
Ozoa ko eastern cape kilelo kola parlamente eno kape kilelo kola committee.
We've received the apology of Honorable Winkler.
Ra barako pa, ra bolala kape ki mototere Winkler.
Uh, ozoa ko Kwa Zulu Natal, a member of a committee.
He hails from KZN and is a member of this committee.
It's actually a she.
It's a she. Kimusadi kamanzoma?
A gime.
Oh, gime.
Yeah. Um, we also have the apology of Honorable Dave Bryant.
Uh, mototere Dave Bryant le ne ukaylo horu agaso konukonating.
Ozoa ko western cape.
He's from western cape.
Uh, apology Honorable Paulson.
And then liyaha mototere Paulson.
Le ne ozoa ko western cape.
He's also from western cape.
We also have an apology of Honorable Singh.
Kapele mototere Singh le ne ukaylo horu kaskonukonating.
Honorable Singh ozoa ko Kwa Zulu Natal.
Uh, mototere Singh ene ozoa ko Zulu Natal.
Rabanga tane?
So rabanzi, uh, we are many, can you see?
Eni gi kanyemonade.
Now, that is, that is good news.
Honorable Mthunu is a member of the ANC in parliament.
Uh, mototere Mthunu kilelo kola ANC ko parlamente.
Honorable Ganjo is a member of the ANC in parliament.
Mototere Ganjo kilelo kola ANC ko parlamente.
Honorable Damine is a member of the ANC in parliament.
Mototere Damine kilelo kola ANC ko parlamente.
Then you have me.
Edohunale, edohunan na janu.
Ki ovias ne?
No.
Ki ovias, ki kavedi. Ki kavedi ya you?
How is it that I am twice?
Ra ora ki wonaga.
Ra ora ki...
Or libelela ki zoga. Obilela ki zoga.
Where do you think I may be coming from?
Humpunisim.
So can't you see that in me?
Balai temabo.
I would like to put the lights on.
Okay.
Hussian baha iso.
But the point I'm making here is that we are a multi-party committee.
Ncha ekile kanyah kati sa fano facho re maroko adi makoko afarlo kani, adi committee.
Honorable Singh is from the IFP.
Uh, mototere Singh ene ozoa ko IFP.
Honorable Holomisa is from the UDM.
And then mototere Holomisa kiwa UDM.
Honorable Winkler.
Mototere Winkler.
Bryant.
Bryant.
Weber.
Weber.
Ozoa ko DA.
Bo neke ba DA.
And then Honorable Mbata is from the ANC.
Edohunana mototere Mbata wa ANC.
Then you have me.
Edohunan nabaha it.
Kara ali radikanyi.
It looks like you don't like this one.
Lagibu abu elona.
Even when I speak your language.
You know, when we were in Limpopo, I was speaking Chivenda.
Kineki buase Venda harner loko Limpopo.
And the baba bo zahora, entla kutuaka yo.
And then they asked me, "But where do you come from?"
Ki riki so.
Then ki baka ki baka akiri, no, I'm just like, you look at me.
Di ruzoa ko political party nefin be ki riki so.
They said, "Which political party are you coming from?", then I just said to them, "Look, I'm like this."
Beriyo Kwa Zulu Natala beki buasizuru.
Then we went to KZN, then I spoke Zulu there.
The baba bo zahora, entla kutuaka yo.
And they said, "But where are you coming from?"
Be ki riki so.
And then I said to them, "Look, I'm just like this."
Ni woni baba bo zahora ki zoko political party nefin be ki riki so.
And they also asked me, "Which political party are you coming from?", then I just, my response was just this.
Lan soara ne?
Lan khalochan.
Jelesnesefastani iriku desmi.
Khalikhalochanye di lo tsa gi di buanzele.
Jelesnisio ne?
Koru khaliso olonan.
Or jealousio sometimes.
Or maybe sometimes it is so.
All right. Ku zo bamnand.
Well, we're gonna have a good time.
Right. We are told that there are cross-cutting events of government in the city of Matosana.
Refetachobolela la horo honali di dira kha lotshapuso tshedi dira kha kana ko ilen we fe la mono mo Matosana.
Apparently the buses were ferrying people to some event earlier in the morning.
Hobonala di pesi di ne di sa ba ti koma fe lo afarlo kano, ho sala kalemo musongono.
Um, is it in council? I think in council there's an event.
Yeah, for the council.
Yeah, and elsewhere. And they're told the MEC is not aware that we are coming here.
Ibele ki kuakote MEC leno nasai tsehota harona.
But the information we have is that as far early as the 28th of February, we informed all provinces that we will be coming.
Meru na, siri sisi ki hori, ho tshakafala kadi 28th of February, rebolilele sidi province, so tshekhori remutzi lengreita.
But we are not here to consult mayors.
Me harata fano fahotla huo buisana lizi mayara.
Or the speaker.
Or speakers.
Or the chief whip.
Or chief whips.
We are here to speak to the people of South Africa.
Ri kilefano ho tshakobuisana le bato ba Afrika Borua.
Because these pieces of legislation that we are passing do not affect the leadership of councils.
Kalibakala horu melawana, ene ere batala ho ifitisa hori innemula yitatayo neha i ame bai tele di pele.
They actually affect the people of South Africa.
Ba Afrika Borua.
I'm making this point because we had expected at least the executive mayor to come and welcome us.
Ki bua seno kalibakala horu, renirebele tsehoru executive mayor atla horu ramucheela.
Or at least the council are among those.
Ho tsa, mo councilara ala mo we feela.
Eh, abarbolele horu di nchadi bofi.
And then to tell us that we are very welcome?
Maravazar bolele, lonande weli smile ankate, ne rabonohu di nchadi bofi.
But now, if they don't tell us, the way we can see among yourselves, it looks like we are very welcome.
Are we welcome?
Are amorelese kene?
Retu elepi.
Can we continue?
Ah, ku zo bamnand.
We're gonna have a good time.
It's gonna, I've got this feeling.
Ki ayukuka mo ma di.
This feeling.
Ki ayukuka mo ma di.
You know this feeling?
La yu, la ubuuka bui kuto jo kinalo jo.
La buka.
Can you feel it?
Ho tlasia omu.
Well, now, all will be okay.
We, I'm going to invite Honorable Mthunu.
Uh, kitle kroko pa mototere Mthunu.
Hori arve overview.
To give us an overview.
Arablele horu wa horali buthokoba horu reconcall tabato ba South Africa, Kat Climate Change Bill.
To tell us as to why is it important for us to consult with South Africans about Climate Change Bill.
Ho zamo, uh, retu yubita Honorable Damine.
Then from there, we shall call upon Honorable Damine.
Arablele hori retu bua ya.
Uh, to tell us exactly how are we going to proceed with our inputs.
Ranabe ridira shut up.
And then we close.
Eh.
And then we do shut down.
Eh, be kubu aluna ya.
And then it will be your turn to speak.
Oh, no, 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 ki wonatukiu. Ki wudume.
Ki wanake tseki uteng.
Yeah, ne ki utu utu kabo.
So I actually deliberately overlooked you.
Yeah, because the last time I checked you were in Saudi Arabia or something.
Ta horu na ha ne ki kuakela, la bo fele ne ki kuakoto ko Saudi Arabia.
Anu libone lamfata ni sa obonecha.
Yanu ki fakhwekele body, I was not seeing you, just blinded.
Ki tobi zare Ramaru akonakoro taluseta, I hope otakonakubu ajakan na, awesoo.
Let me call on Mr. Ramaru, I hope he's going to be like that, be able to speak like me.
Are unpack ele bikinyana horu, sinter sinter rabata imolu.
Just to unpack a little bit as to what are we actually looking for from you.
Ho zamo be kubu alu.
Then from there, it's gonna be you, your turn to speak.
Moraho hastere fedite horu terhoto fedite berbuale berbita mototere Ganjo.
And then right at the end, after speaking and satisfied, then we'll call upon Honorable Ganjo.
Abare, abare tsoalara bo yila hori, are fetachotadi view salona re diraya.
Who is going to bring our meeting to a close by telling you as to what are we going to do with your inputs.
Ma, we are not the only team of four that is here.
Karri maloko a mane fe la asutropasese lenfano.
Uh, rabanzi to.
We are very many.
I suspect we are a delegation of about 30 people.
Ekhekebelela horu totata ra barunga baba to baka nafeti kapaa.
Retediwa nka ngoan olango.
Ibele retediwa nka, we are 31 including a crying child.
Yeah. Now, I want to request the parliamentary staff from the protection services, media, sound, camera, everybody, secretary. Bayemele leba bono horu rabanga tato.
Jekopano maloko atango parlamente ngata shirelezo ba media, the secretary, leba ba ngo botsho re bayema kamautelobo no horu totara banzi.
Labor department.
Leba ma fa pa.
Awana rabanga ta ya.
Alawa nako rabanzi yamba kai.
Ena ricadi iliso.
We are so many and we are everywhere.
Eno ogarun trela kabu.
So if you think...
Ogantela kabu.
You can blindside me in any way.
Omunkyo omorakado.
Oh. There is one behind me as well, we are many indeed.
Right. Rissiam.
So, are we ready?
Is it nice to be here first?
Um, alu do me laho bolile fakunpiye.
Let me check, did you get some fruit nyanas?
Uh, balu files ma ungo loje.
Yeah, I think we must organize some more ne?
Uh, retarula kanya au ketsa kilen horo seka.
Yeah. Chili's will check for us if we can get some more. Ma ria itu hori more, Honorable Ganjo iti kwa pa.
Chili'si, uh...
Skamato loga so.
Oh, okay.
Honorable Ganjo iti kwa pa. Eh, o tarbolela sin tahaka ubuakoro hori, agi kawa pele, ho za utile ipu tere na. Langu kdo mos? Eh, ho tshonamunatika, how to sip eshem? Eh, reta ma fe. Yanu, eni kara ona, ki iti Honorable Damine le nasangu ti, ma rikwanaka unzato lokeleka. Okera to loka maka. Okramo belela tshedi posa kitinga ma rri, batambo zako tuwo, ki taba ki zoya. Honorable Mthunu?
Mototere Mthunu?
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson, and my humble greetings to the Chairperson, the members of the portfolio committee, the staff, parliamentary staff. And I heard that there is a representative from the premier's office and the MEC's office.
Ki ya lebocha modula stulo kachonoe, karata hori ki du medise committee, le maloko atangta khaa committee, ki du medise le se chaba kaufela. Uh, leba di ricaro na ko parlamente, kugula hori, akonale baylo horba tsoa ko officing ya mo premieri. Uh, wa, wa, rabah amucheela leboana kaufela baylo horba MEC di teo zapuso.
And humble greetings to the people of Matosana, who are very important to us.
Ki du medise le loona batubamo Matosana ka trompo, le ba tuba trompa khaa ibile babu tokwa tata mo korona.
We are here today as parliament because South Africa is already experiencing impacts of climate change where different parts of the country are affected in their unique way by the climate change.
Uh, ri kilefa khumpie no mo Matosana, uh, kobane mo na kenyarona ya Afrika Borua, sese risi mulu so kobona di kamoraho. Za peto ho ya ma emo aluapi, uh, mo di tulonse afarlo kani, ki soana sese ritisi se mfa khumpie.
Some experience extreme heat which affect people, animals and crops.
Uh, mo ho kong rekra elo horu kufisa tata, mo ilon horu konalidi kamoraho, mo batung di portfolio li di chalo.
Due to the extreme heat, some people suffer from heat stroke.
Uh, kabakala ho kote la tata, uh, kanakongu batubaba angba feleza batsharo ki di stroke.
In other parts of the country were experiencing water scarcity.
Uh, mo di karulonse di intana khayaro na rekra elo horu mezi kubi ma horu akraha le.
Storms, disasters, floods, landslides which resulted to loss of lives.
Uh, akonale di kohola, uh, se se ilon hori di kamoraho ke horu akonale ho toko falakawa bato.
People were left homeless and severe damage to the infrastructure.
Uh, mo ilon horu batubaye ba sala basena mahaye, ibile huile horu asenyeha li tirelo ya ho kabunzi.
And basic services are interrupted when the disaster strikes.
Uh, ibile se, uh, se, uh, se ose ama kofana kadi tirelo, ha akonale ma emo ama yalo ama sisi.
Climate Change Bill is the first legal framework to directly respond to climate change and its associated impact in South Africa.
Mo la utomo o, wa ho fetoka fetoka, ha ma emo, ha bu emo ba aluapi, uh, ki kato ya pele mo mo lao, eri dirilen, ilon hori yona, etoko meka meka na lohutibukeela, bu emo bo ba peto ho ya aluapi.
And I'm sure when we are done with these public hearings and the bill has been passed to be enacted, you will proud yourselves to have been part of the process of making the first climate change law in South Africa.
Ki ya tsapa hori, kasi sese refiti sese mo lao o, sese o, o, fiti sese ko parlamenta, horu onemo lao o, senuan tiriso. Ki nalebone eti ba hori lo na le kohui khaan sa, hori lilela, ngakarolo mo mo lao, wa pele, mo Afrika Borua, o ilon horu, o, o, ma itomo aonakohutibukeela, di kamoraho za peto ho ya aluapi.
As a country, we are signatory to Kyoto Protocol and Paris Agreement.
Yakanaha rona, rile ranka karolo mo di tumelanu, uh, za machaba chaba, za Kyoto le Paris.
So the bill seeks to ensure that we have a framework and systems towards achievement of national emissions reduction targets that link global warming to globe, uh, uh, ensure to...
Ma ikelelo a mo la utomo o, ko horu, rekonakori rebelilia, anu le ilo horu, etoko kona horu, litsibukeela di kamoraho za peto ho ya aluapi.
In the long term, just, in the long term, just transition, climate resilient.
Uh, lo horu, rekonakori, relebele di nklaze, mo na konge telele, le nanewo la horu, rekonakori, restha bele, koza komeka meka na li di kamoraho, se bakuanke yona peto ho ya aluapi.
And lower carbon economy and the society to provide for connected matters.
Uh, lo horu, rekonakori, re teu le, uh, kabono, mo, mo, wongwari na, uh, ha mo ho le mo se chabensaro na, horu rekonakori, re, re tibukele di kamoraho se u.
Since our constitution recognizes that to an environment that is not...
Uh, kobane mo lau teu waro na, hori, uh, mo to, batu botli, uh, banale to ke lo ya horu, ba dule mo ti kuluhong, ilon horu, haina buku, zimobu pilomba bo na.
And well-being to have environment protected for the benefit of present and future generations.
Uh, lo horu, rekonakori, relebele bu emo bo maleba, ba ba hori bela, uh, di, ho, ho, komeka meka na li di kamoraho se u, mo korona, li di koholoanese di sa.
And as parliament, we are obliged to consult the communities.
Uh, yaka parlamente rona ra kapele tseka, hori reta, retlo kobanzana, re reta, retlo kobanzana di se chaba.
Because we have to promote active and representative public participation towards enabling all community members to meaningfully influence the decisions that affect their lives.
Uh, kobane rea kapele tseka, kuya kamulau, horu rekonakori, re rootway, tsehongka karolo ha se chaba, uh, mo di tshwezo, nso tshetse no hori di amama pilo abon.
We also want to utilize communities diversity to deepen, to deepen shared understanding and produce outcome of a long-term benefit to the whole community or society.
Uh, ibile renga, ho, ho, farlo kana karo na, mo, mo di, mo di chabi, mo se chabensaro na, horu rekonakori, relebele di kamoraho se u, za namona konge telele, le lo horu se chaba saro na, se kabuna biang, mo di, uh, mo ma anung, oru banglo.
So parliament as a lawmaker is obliged to consult and seek your views.
Uh, parlamente yona, yaka lekotla taramulau, yona ke ya kapele tseka, kuya kamulau, horu ba tgeba tgo kubuama ikuto asa chaba.
Since we are the government of the people by the people.
Kobane reli puso ya bato, uh, za mayso anke bato.
So we are inviting your inputs in this...
This chapter empowers the M E C and take the risk and vulnerability assessment and be able to develop strategies that are aimed at addressing the impact of climate change in the province and in the local sphere.
Eh, yona ifanaka di tata homoprimia lady mayara, hori bakona hori, ba 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 ahe di teo zelo hori, di tokona hori, di lebele, nka ya hoo tibuchela, di kamo raho za peto hoya liabi, mo profensing, le mo mitositoropo.
There will also be empowered programs and projects that are aimed at addressing the issues of climate change and report progress to the minister in terms of how we are doing on the implementation on the ground.
Batlo huna lady tata za hori bakona hori ba tibuchele, mananeo ailo hori ateng, bakona hori bayi zi se, ba bayi lo hori baba okamezi, hori bayi zi se emo seu, sa di kamo raho za peto hoya luapi, mo si chabi.
Chapter four focuses on national adaptation.
Eh, kaolo ya bone, yona eh mabapi, lele na ne la si chaba la hoo tibuchela di kamo raho zeu.
It will empower the minister to develop one, the national adaptation strategy that will guide all spheres of society, business, private sector, and other sector department to implement and develop their own climate change response plans.
Eh, troho neya letona di tata za hori akona hori, adirisane lady teo zediin, za si chaba sarona, lady kuebo, eh lady kopano zediin, za mo si chabi, hori basimule yang mananeo abona, akolebe akho tibuchela di kamo raho za ho fetohakha luapi.
It will also empower the minister to do the risk and vulnerability assessment and the projections so that will be able to understand what the future climate would look like and implement appropriate measures.
Eh, ebile kape ifali tona di tata za hori yeena, akona hori, alibe di si se, nka eu eh mabapi le bukozi, bo kanante ngaba kaladi kamo raho zeu, lo hori ba bele chabe lopeli, ya hori ekaba eh bo e mobaluapi, buto ho emaya mo na gong eka.
The minister will also be empowered to undertake a synthesis report whereby all these spheres of society will be able to provide their report and the minister will synthesize it to get a full picture of our progress on the ground in the implementation of adaptation measures.
Ebile letona oto horo sa maikarabelo, akhor akopanya di report ozeu kaufela za di teo ze farlohanen, hori akona hori a di re reporto en nozi, eh konan hobo sa bo emo ba di kamo raho za peto holoapi monahein.
Chapter five focuses on mitigation, which is the greenhouse gas removals.
Eh, ya bu chano karolo yona eh lebele zehemo tabing ehu ya ho hotela ha luwa wa lobi, lo hori rona, rega di ra in, hori ra ra konan hori ritibuchela seu.
In this chapter, the minister will be empowered eh to set what we call the carbon budget, which simply means the limit upon which business will be able to emit their emissions to assist in the reduction of the greenhouse gas emission.
Eh, kape etrohofale tona eh di tata za hori akona hori ayre seu serenkei kabelo ya carbon, eh eh ilin tabai eh le na neo la hori eh di kampani zelo hori diinza carbon, batwanzibanzie ekana ngamba sa fetasilikanu seu, se lo hori se kaba sebei.
The minister will also be empowered to set what we call the sectoral emission target. These are targets that will be allocated to the sectors in terms of them assisting in the achievement of the emission targets.
Ebile kape letona le tana lady tata za hori akona hori abiadi ti kanyezo, ho sektara eh eweli ewe, hori bakona hori bayi zi, hori eh bo na ba kantza carbono ho fiti kamo silekanon se si rile.
The minister will also be empowered to do the greenhouse gas inventory. This is the reporting mechanism where we are able to track all these emissions in the country and be able to provide progress on how are we doing in implementing this bill.
Eh, ebile ota eh minister oto fuakape lady tata le maikarabelo, akhor akona hori a a di re reporto ailo hori, bo e ho lebele wa, mo diin kentzei zelo hori eh di balidi kamo raho mo ho hotelen ha luapi, hori bakona hori eh bayi zi, hori keze di fin diinza zelo eh di di tulazelo hori eh di na le bukozi.
The last chapter focuses on the transitional matters, the general transitional matters, which focuses on the development of regulations which are going to be key in the implementation of the climate change bill.
Eh, karolo eh eh kaolo eh la tela yona eh lebele zi nka ya hori eh ya ho fetela, ho se emo se si se si la tela ngori eh harigrele diinza ze kaufela ze, ki di katoze fin ze ri di di ra mabapi le hoo tibuchela eh di kamo raho zeu za peto hoya luapi.
These regulations will include, among other things, eh the carbon budget allocation and carbon budget compliance, sectoral emission compliance as well. They will also include monitoring and evaluation regulations in terms of the implementation of our climate change response in the country.
Eh, seu eh hori hori, ho troho lebele liwa, mo tabing ehu ya di ti kanyezo, za ho kuiwaha carbon ehu, mo eh di sektare zee farlohanen, eh lo hori di kamo raho za ting eh di 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 tibuchela, ka mananeo ama fin, hori ra ra konan hori, rebelele na neo lelo hori, le trohona, hori re meka meka ne, yona nka eh ya di kamo raho za eh peto hoya luapi.
This is the summary of the climate change bill, Chair, and I think it will be the first climate change act in the country once it is passed that will regulate all activities of climate change and it will be good for the country to adopt this act so that we are able to address these challenges associated with climate change. Thank you, Chair.
Kezo na diinza zeu kabukuzanyana za mulauo, ki atsepa hori di troho ri tu sa tata hori ra ra konan hori ritibuchele, di kamo raho za peto hoya luapi eh hoya ka mulauo wa pele wa peto hoya luapi, ke lebo kha kome na kani mo du lasdu.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramaru.
Re akolebo kharre Ramaru.
Ki ku pao verole ma maigo.
Okay.
Ki watla huda singu nyana.
Enarriyo.
Eh, enarri. Now, me- Mr. Ramaru says.
Eh, re Ramaru are.
Honorable. Mr. Ramaru says, "I don't have the same charisma as the Chair."
Eh, ndate Ramaru ore yeena cha simo tu ailo horo onale meka ye ho cha na le mo du lasdu.
Matada anedda. Matada anedda. Mr. Ramaru, ki isu mupeidi, but is this what you are saying? It's not, right? Because eh, horo na imutamitai. I'm a clown. Our real or.
Eh, cha se se ke ke se bolela eh cha nsi cha cha retoroka mo du lasdu. Eh, we transfer the semantics, not transliteration. We are discouraged from translating word for word because it may temper with the semantics.
You see, I think that, I I think another problem. I I think another problem, another problem gi justification. Hold on, because Mr. Ramaru says, "I don't have the the same charisma as the Chairperson." Nda doari, na ki clown. No, ki wizarezele.
Ki lebo kha wizarezele mo du lasdu.
I want to take this opportunity to welcome eh honorable aduans.
Kirata horo za sepa kase ni seki ama chele mo totochi adua.
Do you know honorable aduans?
Ah, lo amwiti mo totoche aduots.
Kenjela var. Jala kenari.
Halimwiti.
Is it for the first time you see it?
Kisa nklumona.
Okay, 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 slowly. Let's start slowly.
Arisimola ka ike, arisimola kape ko si mo loho.
Watla gi buka stwa.
So I'm going to say it in so twana.
Ali, is you honorable aduans?
Yes.
Oh. Kenjela for honorable aduans?
Alu amwiti eh mo totoche aduots.
Okay, honorable aduans, welcome. Ordinarily, honorable aduans is supposed to welcome here, welcome us here.
Senkente kenana tonto kora amo chele fano.
Yeah, but eh, ruvala sbakama.
But she.
Retzukile pele.
She sleeps much longer, we woke up much earlier than her.
Raba raba vite la pele mo.
We even arrived here before.
Yeah. Mirnaga nouri, no ta vita muka e.
We thought, we thought she would be here from eight o'clock to welcome us.
Honorable aduans is an A N C member and a whip of the ba- of the Basic Education, Basic Education Portfolio Committee.
Mo totoche aduansi ki eh lelo ko la eh tatu doya moteo.
Ki whip ya.
And, and happy ki whip ya komiti eno ya rona.
Yeah, ke lelo ko la parliament, she's from Tlaxto.
Eh, a member of parliament from Tlaxto.
Skambana wa contesta bu maya. Obawone ba ta basa ta frica ba witu mel, ilili ilili, ilili. Obora re di lekshimi basa. Welcome, honorable aduans.
Ra ho mo chela mo totoche aduans.
Thank you very much for joining us, we feel home now.
Ra lebo kha laho bo, oh, nalor na fanofari kutuara mo chele si kila re mo hi.
Before you arrived, we we were, we were welcomed by the people of the seat of.
Eh, pele oho ra fanofari lera akeba tu eh ba mono omo maklosana.
Eh, we apologized, we had started a bit late.
Re, eh, ko batwala fele akor resimula za kamo raho hana ko.
But there are cross-cutting events across the city, something in council and all of that.
Konali di ra halotedi di ra hanka na kolongo fe la momutze is toropo ono o, ko canceling jalo le jaa.
But we are happy with this attendance.
Meri tumela babalin dingfamu palo ya bone.
And ki abono, ikarapula ya sarasa ra kamondla.
And it seems like it's drizzling outside.
And get climate change re eh.
Ya no, that's the climate change we have in mind.
Let's arbulala kayo na ki.
So you will tell us about that, I don't know about it.
Let's invite honorable Dlamini to tell us how do we proceed from here.
Arko pe mo totoche Dlamino horo, atahro bulala horo troho tza la yanka diro ya ro.
Mo totoche Dlamini.
Eh, honorable Dlamini.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Ra lebo kha mo du lasdu.
Protocol is off the air, barring, the protocol is observed.
Re re, amo cheseleba totoche bo.
My task that I'm supposed to do with you will be simple and clear.
Diro yame eki tla kui di ra fanofa, emo trofu ikutuani inwa la senke.
First thing, I know all of you, you do have the copies of the climate bill.
San cha ya ito horo lo tlaya kahalo ntsi yana, mo lo mungu alona ochere pa npiri ya, mo la kromo olua peto hoya luapi.
And I've been told that you have read it.
Ebile ki bolelo to horo loe ba di.
Now you are ready to do comments.
Jano ngusia me tohunza di troya loza lo.
Now the way we'll do it.
Jano ntsi lerikliyohu di ra kayo ne.
When we are being recognized to come and speak.
Etara ha usupiwa horo otla kubua.
You must introduce yourself.
Ra ko pa horu wiki tisu horu kue na man.
If your name is everlasting Dodayami.
Ailo horu lina laha horu everlasting Dodayami.
You must say so.
Eh, ubu eho, ubu e lina leo.
Secondly, you should be able to speak the language that you understand best.
San cha esabobeidi, ubu eka pu ailo horu e kalo hanyaa buto kahu di fetasotlen.
So you don't just stand up and talk.
Ha weme fe la obusimola ubua.
You raise your hand as I'm doing it.
Ustoleza pele leto horo laha horu jaka hakidira jana.
The Chairperson will recognize you.
Mo du lasdu lo otla ho supa.
And ask you to come and occupy one of the seats in the middle.
Aba ho ko pa horo otla konamoho sego sa di tilo ze di fakhareze.
Those that will be asked to come and speak.
Bo tla ba batla benba kupilo horu ba tla kubua.
We are only given five minutes.
Ra horo na ya me toso ele me chano.
Even you have twenty pages, but only five minutes.
La ha okasana lady zebaidi le twenty, ra batla horu uwe me tose me chano fe la.
If you are not done with all your pages.
Ailo horu ha wa feza di zebezo keza ha ho.
One of our member, Memchileka.
Monguwa ma lo ko aro na eh me Chileka.
She will give you a form.
Otla horo na ya foromo.
To do your own submission, a written submission.
Horo okua le motengha yo ne di troya loza ha ho.
And all of you, you will be giving that form.
Lo tla fe la mongole mongu alona utla konawa foromo e.
So that you should be able to write it down what you want to say.
Ailo horo okua le mo hyo na se ono oba tla kusibua.
Now those copies will be given back to her.
Me di kopizeo zote, di klabidi busedu akoha e ne.
So that now the committee will read the copies, all your submissions.
Hori komiti eh ho baladi kopizeo no zote.
And make a report based on those.
Eh, eho di ra di peho eh ele hori eh amana lady troya lozo za lo.
How we're going to know that you have finished your five minutes?
Ri tla kui tijang hori eh, osato fele toki five minutes.
These new phones, they are able to time you.
Eh, di phone izedi incha zenu zetu konan ho balanako.
But if you don't have the phone that you are timing you.
Me ailo horu ha ona phone eho ka idrisa za ho bo na horu na ka ha ho itza makai.
The Chairperson will stand up with a smile.
Eh, mo du lasdu lo otla ya maka di na o, ayi, niya na le mo nyinyomo sfahto ho.
That smile simply says, "Your time is up."
Se maile seu sa kha kesa horo ra se re na koya ha ho efidiile.
Then you must sit down before she close his mouth.
Jano re ko pa horu we na obon na fa fatse, pele atwa la mo lo.
He's a very nice person, you understand him.
Ki moto ilo hori, oh, kalo hanyaa ba to senke, lo ba twa ra senke. Jano ri tla kudira jana.
When you raise your hand.
Atuleza letoho.
Will take five from this side.
Ri tla kozaba ba chano ho za kafale kagurinle.
And five this side.
Ri beretza ba ba chano ho za kole kagurinle.
You occupy those chairs in the middle.
Meri klaberoko pa horu we konamoo di tilo ntsu zetu di faha.
After we are done.
Harifedi ze.
Will be able to give you another opportunity.
Ri tla berelona ya chuno ewe kape.
To take five this side.
Ho za ya ba ba chano kamo.
And five that side.
Le ba ba chano kaku.
We are requesting you.
Ra lo ko pa ba hai.
Once you have already said something.
Ha osetu ubuile sewe.
Don't leave the wall until we are finished.
Re ko pa horu oske wa za maya, ho fiti harifei za.
Because we are encouraging you to know what other people are saying.
Ga honne eh ba tla horu rotoza horu luiti horu baba ngubone barin.
Then that one will help us a lot.
Seu se taru tuza fe la tat.
I thank you for your cooperation.
Ki lebo kha la diresanomoho ya lo.
Yes, Chair.
Ki lebo kha mo du lasdu.
Thank you very much, Honorable Dlamini.
Eh, ki lebo kharre mo totoche Dlamini.
Remudili.
Eh, did you hear him clearly?
Karitzepe tepe.
With both your ears.
All right. Honorable Dlamini, arsimule ko letoho lamoo jana.
He says, "We're gonna start on the right-hand side."
Retze matzoa amatlan.
And then we are going to take five from there.
Beretla kamomulemi.
And then we move on to the left.
Retze matzoa amatlan.
We will shall take five hands as well.
Ki ko pa matzoa amatlanu kamomuji.
Can I have five hands from the right-hand side, please?
Akishabile ku amu jawa kaki o.
So by looking at you, this is my right, on this side.
Can we then take five hands from the right?
So roko pa matzoa amatlanu ka fa.
So when we note you, you come and occupy this seat.
So arasna ho ho supa, oya konamusi tilo se sa faha.
Then we note the five on this side.
Then berabata ba ba chano ho za kamole kagurinle.
Now, Honorable Dlamini says, "If you don't want to come and speak here."
So eh, mo totoche Dlamini arhailo horu ha oba tla kubua fa pele fa.
You have a right to make an a written submission.
Onale tshwanelo ya horu okakuala di troya loza ha ho fofa.
Libito lamme, oh, leki chilies.
So the name of that lady there is Chileka.
Chilies.
Chilies.
Yes. Eh, she will give you a form.
Eh, otalo na ya foromo.
Then you can make your written submission.
Eh, okakuala di troya loza ha ho bo koyo.
Can we now note hands?
Aru bo ne ma toho ba hai cho.
No, ya iraala everywhere koro zamanding, ukala umamele pilu horu babambarin, luena bo.
Wherever we go, it happens, some some people want to wait a bit to listen to what others are saying and later on they start to want to speak.
It's allowed. Honorable Dlamini, with your permission, I'll go to the left.
Okay, eh, katitaya ha ho, mo totoche Dlamini amborboni, uan takiyo.
Me tlaya.
Eh, okatla ma.
Ker, keme. Keme tlaya.
Ra ho ko pa loe na me okatla.
Okay, other hands.
Amamo matzoho.
Let's come to the left. Re tlaya.
Okatla re.
Bosi, wenawa ino da. Tuleza leto. Otsebe hafi ya ba toba honorable aduans ki ba isi kama beat. Yeah. Eh, ki ba bolele to horu ki mutuafa. Eh, ngali ngali pizza kama hinalu na, by one, by one. Ya no, boisi eh, boisi ya, tulezu, oitela ela. Manana tumel.
All right, yo 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 mogu kape.
Bosi tla. La ba na maru ki boha. All right, okay, let's take more hands, on the left or on the right?
Aritze yeng ba ba chano kamol, kamomulemen kafa. Ba ba chano. Nobody.
Do we have more hands?
Arnale ba ba chano ba 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 tla ho tzena.
Okay, basan seba inaha. Eh, me ki troko pa, ba, when you rise, you tell us your name. If you represent the organization, ki organization efi, if you toko what one, ki what one, if you see the W, ki you see the W, and all of that, lo horo our support the billi, akho za ha we support, ager. Right, let's start.
Okay. Africans, but I'll be asking English. Huh?
You've got an English.
Yeah. Must I shoot? My name is Celeste Watt, A N C member, three, deputy secretary.
My name is Celeste Watt. Akesa, eh, young secretaries for the A N C here. Komitier, any komitier?
Yeah. Um, but eh, graha, mais, iketswa vragi ki.
I have a question I would like to pose.
Okay. What resource can you offer us that you are doing everything in your power to hold climate change and to protect our way out in safety?
What a versekeren kan i for ons biet, omte te warborg, that ons eh omgeving eh beskarim wo, and ons welstand now omgezin wo.
Will you encourage, will you encourage federal agencies to resource scientific data about climate change to their websites to help educate citizens?
Sal i federale aheinska pe anmoda, om data naufoshing eh te dun and work de te publiser opale webla, weblae. That's it.
Okay. Okay, eh, na kenas, Stoki Bloom.
Eh, my name is Stoki Bloom.
Eh, ki tla hago mo khatonwa eh Prospective Farmers Association.
I'm coming from an organization called Prospective Farmers Association.
Eh, san cha ki tro hori, ki lebo chesi, hori balabende itle kwanu mo horona.
First of all, I want to thank you very much for having Parliament come to us.
Hela ki, ki ratahore, ki masuabitat, katela eh lo hori information ehai fiti ko ba tu.
But I just want to say that a cause for a great concern to me is about how information doesn't seem to reach the people.
Eh, yaka eh, secretary of Prospective Farmers Association.
As a secretary of the Prospective Farmers Association.
Kirata hori na, eh, ki bona bili ele butroka ene ki dumalatsana lyon.
I would like to say that I find the bill to be very important and I support it.
Eh, chaka balimirui.
As farmers.
Eh, honali di kueklo zedi inzi tata, zelo hori ri demo chela zone ma ilanali climate change.
There are so many challenges that we face which are related to climate change.
Ene, kirata hori lele tro, hori eh, li troka timo two or three times a day.
And then I would like you to take note of the fact that we need to be practicing agriculture three times a day.
Di apoli zeli di jang, di jo zeli di jang, singu le sewe, hori re pele.
Apples that we eat, the food that we eat, everything that we do, we really need that.
Jano, neki ratahore, parlamenta ekare, ekar ela troka kanya hori. Eh, ha inzi idira di polisi zauna di di ntle taj.
So I would like the Parliament to take note of the fact that as you are actually formulating some policies, those policies are indeed good.
They should be implemented.
Di troya leto horu di zengwe ti resort.
And implementation, eh, troya leto horu yu true, ki ro na ba tuwa balimutasim.
And then we are the ones who must feel the benefit of the implementation of those policies.
Eh, training is once in neting.
We need training.
Hori ri ti, hori responda, jang, mot climate changing, jaka balimirui, li jaka community ya, South Africa.
To know how we can actually respond to climate change as farmers and as members of the community.
Yeah, eri ki re, ki hakidtroya le.
Now, in closing.
Eh, climate change i impact also more healthy nyarona.
The climate change also impacts our own health.
I impact on our psychological being.
And then i amatale mo tla lohanyo.
I impact also on our financial muscles.
I amatale mo ho za di chelate.
So neki ratahore, halinzi le le troya la pele, troya lo ka eh Parlament.
So I would like to say that as you proceed with your work as Parliament.
Ha honali di kueklo zere na le ntsone yaka balimirui ba eh maybe ho ho cha di loze diyalo. Li demo chela onkore la, buela kape mo horona ba tu, ho bona hala hori. Chelate eh eh budgeto ti unhu, di reseto for climate change for, haba tuva sina di du 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 komu di sina di jo, idiri siwa katela eh troya le.
We would like you to take note of the fact that as you continue with your work and then as we face different challenges, for example, like maybe if there is fire that happens and then maybe a kettle are affected and die, we know there is a money budgeted for this. So now you need to make sure that you do come back to us to use it for that very purpose, to make sure that we do benefit.
Thank you.
Ki lebo kha.
Eh, molwen. Sekamala.
Greetings. My name is Mzolis Mpuja.
Eh, ndesoga eh, what thirteen?
I'm from what thirteen.
I'm an A N C member.
I'm an A N C member.
And if you no refer a quick section twenty-five and twenty-seven eh.
I want to refer to section twenty-five and twenty-seven.
Eh, page nine.
Page nine.
Apobati municipal, municipal forum on climate change, mass coordinate climate change response. But as ndo zenzeka apa ne.
But the things that are happening here.
Zenzeka because of eh inanzeka i oku monitor, municipality aban monitor.
Eh, happening because the municipality is not monitoring.
Eh, municipality foot aban as resources is enough.
The municipality doesn't have enough resources.
That is why sinne illegal dumping sites.
That's why we have illegal dumping sites.
Which is now as a contributor to your climate change.
Which is they also contribute to climate change.
And then foot is obazinda ba ze industrials, illegal to zipaka to go community.
And then there are industries that are inside the community.
Unes ndo swa use fana ne cables.
There are things that are burned like cables.
It tires.
And tires.
And a lam silo a koraito affecta inanzeka aban duana, and like eh eh health eh community as as a whole.
And the smoke affects the health of the communities.
And then if foot if naga eh community I can advise oku debas top oku creator eh um um umli lo gungekon necessary.
And I'll also advise the communities to stop starting fire when it's unnecessary.
Especially eh.
Especially burning the grass.
Because in most cases, kreti la gune damages as nens.
Because in most cases, we find that there are big damages after that, um, the the grass has been burned.
Then I will also advise the Parliament.
And I would also like to advise the Parliament.
To assist the municipality to maklosana.
To assist our municipality maklosana.
Because eh in terms of, oh collector inanzeka ne garbage, but in go guma ne.
Because in terms of collecting garbage.
Banetraga is less.
There are less trucks.
And inanzeka yetu imgulu ga kuli logeshi.
And township is very big.
And then fourteen was fana nanzeka ne eh creator.
And then eh graders.
Banetregar is e two.
They only have two of them.
Sometimes it's ne funeral, eh, fana ga ko kolmakua pi kolmakue pi, but then eh creatora iwa, fana ga ku miwe.
And so, and sometimes when we have funerals, we struggle um to have the, to to dig because there's only one greater that is used for that.
And then stella footi basla melena mas, because. And then still eh, footi basla melena mas, because it's the most affecting thing.
And also we are requesting them to please clean our water because that is a very important thing.
Aban duana bayaku, laba patwa zisu.
Our children get sick, our children get sick and they have stomach problems and no one knows what, um, what the reasons that are contributing to that are.
Hmm, chokote ngama yama azune?
In other words?
Se funa kote ngale legislation eh, as eh, what in donkana? Ah, hey. Long time, Tony.
With this bill.
Ben funa kote at least eh, government eh, whenever eh, invent a le inanzika le bill of, hmm, climate change bill, eh?
When the government is implementing this climate change bill.
Abantu be to baso benefit, abakreta eh, project eh, eh, so monitor like eh, so dumping site eh, abane ba chege, buguti abantu abakawle eh, meet gungekon necessary because eh, meet eh, whether it's a nature.
Can our people please benefit from this project because we need people who are going to monitor everything that is happening within the community, like people who, um, destroying the trees and burning grass and things like that, so that we are, we ensure that everything goes according to plan.
And then eh, in tele footi Parliament eh, kote advise eh, kote kui location is eh, abantu bayachis etal gundela gna meet, at least eh, kuplando eh, meet like eh, ne? One kilo away, onga woki ne to akapu sita kono chalanga, right?
We are also requesting the Parliament to please advise the municipality to plant trees because you're, we are dying with burning of sun and, um, you walk for a kilometer and you cannot find a shade where you can hide yourself even when the sun is burning.
So to everyone, diabulela ka kulu kunmamele, ne?
To everyone, thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you.
Do me lamba holo?
Eh, greetings everyone.
Eh, regi te, this opportunity kiamukhela ba itibarona?
May I take this opportunity to welcome our guests, the committee?
Eh, la karaba votisi?
Eh, as we have voted for them.
So that ba honu or safe.
Eh, so that they are able to serve us.
Eh, na kitoku bota fe la di lu nyana, tepe di fe la?
Eh, I am going to limit myself to two questions.
Eh, kitoku bota ka eh, coal mahala?
Eh, I am, my first question is regarding coal?
Because eh, honali this eh, proposal or eh, move ya kore eh, our government eh, ba talore, re to eh, from mahala?
Eh, because there is this proposal that our government eh, is proposing to abandon the usage of coal.
Re go, but if it's a green renewable eh, something?
And go to green renewable energies.
But the funny part kore, eh, people who are encouraging us kore, remove eh, away from mahala?
But the funny part is that those people who are encouraging us to abandon the use of coal?
Ke batu wa lo kore mweni, ba bata mahala au, esin like now?
Eh, are the very same people who need the, the coal as we speak right now?
Yes, ra ito kore, mah, mahala anali, tusumitu esasi amang mu, mu healthy nyabatu?
Yes, we know that eh, coal has this negative impact in human life.
But in other countries like eh, yahokeba eh, that carbon, kore esafekta ba tu.
But in other countries like China, they do have the means to mitigate so that it does not affect eh, human life.
Now, eh, na ne koko paho, advise a portfolio, committee kore eh, the move ya kore, remove eh, away from coal, ayana kore bereke, eh, like niks niks?
Eh, I would therefore like to advise the committee that this proposal to abandon eh, the use of coal is not going to benefit the public at all.
Eh, khudile ka mahala inhiwe ah, rebonar bakananka?
Eh, we have been raised using coal, here we are, we are adults now.
Kubu fillung eh, billionaire eh, welcome, kala bocha.
Eh, we supported the bill, thank you very much.
Ra, ra, Ravi? Na, na kahuizin, kahuizakali bi to le so fani, kahuizaloko hangi na kujobetina? Marabomme baliborre bakabahuiz.
Oh, my it's farrel. Elina ke kahiso matebele ke so koo thirty-seven?
Apologies on that one, my name is? Kahiso matebele from what?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Eh, nonlele, awa bullele lon?
Order.
Thank you, thank you very much. Eh, can we, let's take another round of hands. Thank you very much. Eh, Bres Celeste, where's Celeste? Yeah, you, you, we have noted your questions. Um, we are afraid that we might respond now when you leave, so we want you to sit there, so we'll respond later. Do you understand? Eh, 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 yeah. Okay, any other hand? B, C? Watu lete le donakomra? Any other hands?
Macho aman?
Batu ba mu matlu sana, le raha kore ke maswe kaka lula ntaba? Ake maswe, aris mulle mu? Ake maswe? Kimuntli? Okay, le dona? Kahuiz, kahuizakali bi to le so fani, lewe, eh, 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 okay, let's get more hands. Okay, I've noted him. Let's get more hands. Two more. Let's just take two more. Eh, is it kusko longne bangeta? Teacher narbo ta di putu so, abari, alisa tu lete, kitalibita kama beat? Eh, no mananas, kavata kubiza kali beat? Le, eh, nama mulu is kater? Kitalibita kama beat? Alright, aris mulleka, kantate kumra, nta de? Eh, it's okay, you can sit.
Eh, Mshali ngapambil? Chairperson?
Nabaku, nabaku fafupe naa?
And your whole entire team?
Eh, di prungo ka kuubi?
I'm really in pain.
You kubonisa eh, picture, you kuba into enzeka yo, apen Matlosana, needs a lot to be desired.
To tell you that things that are happening here in Matlosana are re, there's a really bad, um, I am in real bad state, um, of, of status of course.
Ungena kweni apa, nambe di nazanga apa, enya niswe?
When you came here, you didn't really come here.
Yako bonisuka ba eh, wa mikelu si ti noba besena zanga apa, ti nasizi apen rente, ntsuzulu nisinga kisitu?
To a point that you were welcomed by us even though we didn't even know that you were coming here. We came to the rent office to fix our own problems.
Na lama paper, ateta ke climate change bill?
Even these papers that are talking about the climate change bill?
Siwa zibul?
We are only seeing them for the first time today.
Di panzu kubuza, keta shabuza, kala usache stuba, si, si, si te te, si zo kala apa, pakatinyoba, o kala se ngali, ndale, o kala se ngali.
I actually wondered to find out from you when you were telling us to come here and ask questions.
Diakwela, u ambakweni committee nji?
When you leave as the committee?
Nikunini zintoku ba ni bone, ni te te, na abantu ba tu baspet because na abantu baspet eh, abana kala se le, abana konto ba na yonat?
Please make sure that you talk to the leadership in this area because they don't care about us.
Batonge, inga wasa?
In fact, the only thing that they are focusing on is their own stomachs.
We are jo ngasi de entwes fana nokutu akuma mapoko, nama Alaska, is because of bone eh, because injela be, ba, 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 nyobo kintongazo, eh, 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 atete ki?
There's gangsterism in this area, which is a very bad thing. It is because of how things are happening in this area.
Di sakwela foot indi aspe na di ti, tetani na apa because usu bone asinga, no ba, no climate change, abantu ba nisa bazwa ba itlamachenge do?
I am really pleading with you to speak, to please speak to these people so that they can take care of us. We don't even know what climate change is.
Eh, project, jogi omyo eh, tibetet, eh, project eh, basfuma na bazwa, nega o kaba apa?
When they, when they get projects, they give them to their close, um, people and close friends.
Akone training abayenza yo, at all?
There's not even training that they give to us at all.
And goes.
Thank you so much.
Katakas niganga ika? Yeah, be, kalupindele passes, umeh, umeh, kona apa, now we call it to melindilu, nisile now?
On demand.
Eh, when we write that, atet, ika, sfunanjie ika ma, libe on record?
Nadi, mkosana godfrey sikwana?
My name is, mkosana?
Mkosana godfrey sikwana?
My name is god, my name is mkosana godfrey sikwana, sikwana.
What aid?
Mkosana godfrey sikwana from what aid?
Yeah. Tatusekwa na, utewena, abantu balapa, abani oyanga?
Taksit.
Ut, eh, yonentebai oile eh, zingo, za?
Oso, oso kasa apa?
Eh, utewena zingo, di funi be kolo so kui be kenga?
Eh, we?
Ute ba oye ingo wasa?
Nijaj?
Losis lokfu cha ni na, kai to legal entu iteta, utewena, utba oye izis?
Eh, o, o, o kwa amges tosin disfun di la, eh, siwa tetan do?
Oh, yeah.
O, 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 kaukupa apia tera, o, 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 o,[1429.96]
Riki simuleki. Do medise our portfolio committee?
Let me start by greeting the portfolio committee.
And representative from office of the M E C.
Along with the M E C.
Office and baholo bo tla ba lenkamo.
And protocol observed.
Okay. Libi zo lakaki Bulen Maake.
My name is Bulen Maake.
I'm from the office of the premier in Dr. Kenneth Kaunda district.
Ki zoako office nyahamu premier ya Dr. Kenneth Kaunda.
Okay. Eh je ko pahwe zedi tse loze pe di ze taro.
I just want to make one or two inputs.
Okay. Um san tana kereki lewo kelema zapa a portfolio committee ya tere.
Firstly, I want to thank you for the effort as a portfolio committee that you took.
Ako tla ko consultali community ya ro.
To come and consult with our community.
Okay. So the first advice eki ko pahu huefa portfolio committee ki hori, we need to incorporate I K S indigenous knowledge system.
Eh, the first advice kakulo yanke ikeratan hori ki fe eh lona jakakomite ki hori chantaka retenge ti rison I K S elen indigenous knowledge eh system.
Yes, because if you can just take with with a number of universities in the in the country.
Kakona howo no oka libela sente eh di diversity lema la mona kenyaro na.
There are a number of studies that have been conducted so far in terms of climate change.
Konali di tutu patisi so dilema la zidi setindi diruloka ta vichaja non kaha peto hoya maemo aloapi.
And those documents are just gathering dust in the libraries that are not being utilized.
Medito komane zoezo keza ting edinte fe la modila barre hadi dirisiwi ibile di ketsi le roli.
Yes, I'm 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 saying this because I'm one of those students who um did a a research on climate change and I K S.
Ki bua jalo kakona kilemo owa ba ituti ba elen horba dirile patisi so kaha peto hoya maemo aloapi le kaha I K S.
So there are so many I K S strategies that we can apply in terms of mitigating eh and in terms of mitigation and adaptation towards climate change.
Konali eh di kopolo di li di ntsi tereka na nangka zonasi di amanangli di kato tarabolo lo zidi katsi wang eh ho fukuta eh botata joa who peto kaha maemo aloapi.
Okay, the second thing is in terms of baholo renali eh shortage of water. Somebody spoke about it.
And then secondly, leadership, renale kha lo ya meti mo oile abu akawone.
Yes, as we know that northwest is highly rural.
Eh um yakahari zo hori eh buko lebu pirima kele fe lele le hori ki lasile haye fe la tata.
And we highly depend on agricultural products.
Eni bilero na reka ehi le tata kadi kumo zate mo.
So as one of the participants has already alluded to issues of farmers struggling from eh as as um the result of eh climate change.
Yakaha omunga di bui aseta ile auma kakaha di kotozer lebanale zonakan haya di peto kota maemo aloapi.
Re-experience drying up yadi boreholes.
Eh di dibata ro na zidi epi lueng dia kala.
So renali problem ya horu ya unable to give our animals water.
So the problem we have ki horu hara konu konosa eh di ruwa zaro na.
Okay. So the second advice, kore, maybe we should look into the process of um desalination eh cleaning ya the water from the ocean.
Ho bui bilaya eh kakule ewe renareka taka yo neki ya horu konwi rebo ne horu rekadi ra janghar tamo kanya ya ho pepper fatwa hammeti ya zo angoma watli.
Because in a long run.
Kakona tara hansi na kwe sama.
Retlo konali meti aso altogether godla.
We are going to end up having no water completely from down below.
Because there was a research N S Y K, the Department of Water Affairs, sometimes around twenty, I think it was. But the the findings of the research was that by twenty seventeen.
Eh konali patisi so eile ya diro na konwi efiti len e di pitela zonini dinenza bonza horu moi kananga twenty seventeen. Reta beru sa kholi renali meti kochile.
And we are currently experiencing that.
Me reseti resimulu zo konali botata joa konne jano.
So I'm saying as a long-term intervention.
Kajalo kisaseki ra horu haraka batla kato tarabolo lo e ilen hori etari tusa moisa hui.
So konu konu berikisa meti ale ako ma watli ngaidu se ra itline, re konu konu berikisa ra.
We should use water from the oceans eh eh purify it so that we can be able to use it now.
Okay, the third one ki issue ya eh utilization of wastewater. We need to clean our wastewater. Meti aso modisi wajinsa ro na. We need to clean them, I mean to clean that water and use it as drinking water.
Me ya bo ra ro etan na kanya kudrisa meti ale sway ale hori ki meti ale zoang motenghamatwa na arona. Yakahali le swayalo. Re konu konali zela horu ra pepper fati meti ano ah ra itekise rebo ra dirisa kape.
Ra dirisa kape hua an.
Ra ra dirisa kape lele hua eh also using it so as as a drinking water as well.
Okay. The last issue, I think one of the participants also spoke about ki issue ya reinforcement of the bylaws.
Me ya bo ne e ewe wa di bui ailen abu akayone eh ki ya kote niya ti rison melawana.
Ya ro na ya di bylaws. Especially kodi landfill since arona.
So konu konu hara tamo ma filong aho katelangmatlakala koho.
Okay. And then we know baholo hori reklamo democracy eh through the banning of tires.
Eh we know leadership that we actually got into this democracy eh kahu laita di tire di tukis.
Mother said need to educate our community where banning of tires during community protest also has a negative impact towards climate change.
Me jano re shanetso horu ru de malo karana se chaba hori ho tsubadi tirei harenzi re tushitza mu ru su konse jalo. Le ho na kabo konu konu ama peto hoya maemo aloapi. Eh, thank you.
Bulen. We do, we rela Bulen me. Yeah, ki ba tla hori no utakili mwa lele mobi lunkiska lele ba. Eh awa re Bulen la horu agika osapata bili. We we welcome the inputs eh but we do not tell. And it's when I faila, I'm just saying even those who are following. Ki ko pahu liri tiso hori, are you with us or anti us?
Re ko pahu bo kheba batla la te la nja ka awisi ha bua horu a o tseheta mo la kemo ono kota kha o tseheta. Re ko pahu lebe nka e o modi kha lo kanyo luske wa aleba la horu Bulen la horu la o amoche la kota kha lo amoche.
Agarabat kota ma mo, are fita kua berere redumalan leba to bakomata sa. Belere bama ka oni nderidi.
So we don't want to leave here and then when we arrive and then we say, you know, we are in the agreement with the people from Tassana and then they come, they say, no, they are not telling the truth.
Agarabato.
So do we get the point?
Bulen supports the bill. Thank you very much. Ra.
Di melamaholo.
Eh greetings, everyone.
Eh, can I tell Tasim Kondo?
My name is Titasim Kondo.
Ki zo od five.
So I'm from what five?
Mojibiti.
Eh in Jobitan.
Asa mkanzala Mazenge.
So this is under eh Kansala Mazenge.
Eh ki lokula A N C.
So I'm a member of A N C.
Eh san takina gitari kamkela bili eh eh kamu urunas chava.
Firstly, I would like to say I support this bill that has been brought to us as members of the nation.
Eh se lo kure agno supporta ki tava ya ye omuwa Bulen kaya na ya Mashala.
One thing that I will not support is one point referred to by one of the speakers related to coal.
Because Mashala kuwa ni defelo ke ana di di tamura omoma pili onaru.
Because to be eh to tell you the truth and to be honest, you know, coal actually has some impacts in our health.
But konwi le kape konali tava hori Mashala ripila ka ona konali wa twa lo kuri vatisa eh woro tutaflewa na ba konaku uja re konaku ya dikolo re konaku ya ka kuri tisa wupi.
But on the other hand, we know that coal actually help life to move on. For example, people are able to use it. It enables them to take their children to school, to put bread on the table, or to do the rest of the other things that needs to be done.
Eh ketsa example ka ka Germany. Germany eh uila trya ku insa Mashala.
For an example, I can make an example with the country Germany. They did try to put an end to the usage of coal.
Mara, howu pili wensu utza maya vailawa wanaguru ki po shvai dirili.
But they realized as time went by that they made a serious mistake.
Ba kutela kape o Mashala.
And then they went back to the usage of coal.
Eh renali demand eh tu na kutwa China, India.
There is a huge demand from China and India.
Ya Mashala.
Eh for coal.
So kama zama ome Mashala tisa inkomu ma country ya.
In other ways, coal actually brings economy into our country.
So ki supporta o Mashala atzele pila bere.
So I do support the fact that we must continue with the usage of coal.
Eh renali problem ya meti mona kenyaro.
Now, in our country, we have water problem.
Eh tava ya meti renali provise taro zo lo kure eh diso kola tata ka meti lilipombo eh Eastern Cape eh 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 Free State.
So we've got three provinces that are really struggling with water in our country, and that is Limpo Po, Eastern Cape, and Free State.
It's one that said you take a sabuankatona di na li mara ceu ce taro ceu dikudi.
And then even the rest of the other provinces that I haven't mentioned, but these three that I've mentioned are actually experiencing more serious problem than others.
So kene kitlo wensau hori we etapilwaruna chance bo dula fasva shirisana kadi pleki tse lo kure konali di mine.
So I wanted to say to the leadership that you need to go back and sit down and actually start to communicate and talk about places where there are mining areas.
Eh because the mine is a dingwe like a Free State in northwest the quich.
Because some of the mines have been abandoned, are not in use anymore, like Northwest and Free State.
Mara, konali meti amanitinko.
But those are the places that have a lot of water.
And then meti au di maspa la zaro na di ngakonaku seventy seven meti au ayas chavengayosavet.
And then the municipalities can actually use that water and transfer it to other members of the community so that they can use it.
Wa ne kape adi mine di kuala meti awadula komkoting. Aesa damage kape komkoting. Next time anga etako utsi eh moschavemoo. Wa di mine tse udi mo hopefully di malekishin aru na more pilanti.
And then because the problem here is that when some of these mines are closed, then the water actually sits down there below, it's not being utilized. And what happens then is that it creates a lot of problems and some damage because you find that it is actually closer to some of the townships nearby.
So kene kitwensas se uku re we etapilwaruna awaduli fasva shirisana ka tata tava.
So I'm raising this point to ask our leadership to go sit down and please eh look into this matter.
Eh renali Stelfontene kamo Stelfontene ulika osavetisa wa na meti au ya mku.
So for an example, like nearby is Stelfontene. They are trying to use the water from these mines.
Eh di pleki tse ulo hori eh totala akuna di mine eh mara konali shotisi ya meti. Kene kitwensas hori va etza aktivitua ndi borehole varu kidi engue pa meti kutwa godla.
So now in places which are not actually having mines around but having eh water problem, so what they are actually trying to do is to bore, to 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 come up with boreholes so that they can reach water from down below.
Because howu toshiava di pleki tse di meti totalo feti lipi ke one ite lele tata kure usa kri meti. Naana uku tu unali kwe di unali kwe di taro safo ma imeti. Meti lumulu kintu e wupi lu moba tu.
So it's a big problem because having to spend even just one week without water is too long. Now imagine places where they didn't have water maybe for about a month. When you look at things such as power and water, those are very essentials that we need for life.
So kene kitwensas se uwe etapilwaruna.
So I'm just raising these thoughts with you, please, our leadership.
So ki tafelo namo kereka lewo kau tla moschavi.
So I want to stop here but to say thank you very much for having come to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Udu, udu medise Mazenge Titas? Udu medise Mazenge? Omlelo ko pana leni.
Eh ma dumewa horo.
Eh greetings, leadership.
Eh li na ki itu melen sehopisho muti.
So the name is itu melen sehopisho muti.
Eh ki muduliwa water ele moho ne.
I am.
O tri.
I am a resident in this very ward where we are, and this is ward number three.
Eh kereke lewo he komiti ya parlamente.
I want to say thank you to the parliamentary committee.
Eh kamo sebezi umu njo ba udira moschavengi.
For your wonderful work which you are doing eh within the nation.
Robo tro kwa ta da hori batu barona banale tsidimosizu.
It is very important for our people to have information.
Kamela wa na eh ebafecta omoma pili wago.
Related to eh the bylaws that are affecting their lives.
Ibile mola o antiro she ibilemo.
And then as we looking at this bill.
Ki mola o e lo hori redumalanana lo ne ibile ra wa moche.
It is the one which we agree with and the one which we support.
Eh keta la kela tepedine ana fe.
I'm just going to say one or two of those points.
Ki dumela hori the mitigation of climate change.
Eh I I I accept and agree that eh ohtaka kato tarabolo lo ya ho tutu falaha maemo aloapi ho feto kama maemo aloapi.
It's a generational mission.
Eh ki kanyi idiraha muka komane rtsala mocho.
Le di na hatza konke kane ba za di twezu. Za ho berika na le climate change. Ba di zi le kali merebona eh di results are tend to do.
Even the outside nations, by the time when they came up with decisions to deal with the eh climate change, this was long done, way back, but it is only today that we see the results thereof.
Ya no ki dumela hori ro na re la Africa bowa. Re kaso koni ku di la ka climate change, karesa investe moba nenbaro.
So now I believe that even you as South Africans, we will not be able to deal with climate change if we don't invest in our young ones.
We used to invest in civic education. Ne ka nineteen ninety four had democracy tla renare uta batu barona kabo tro kaba democracy lo vo.
Rene resola kalamla tata ki civic education. Me ene ya rekabo nineteen ninety four eh berokona ho taka tutu ele hori ene etla ba solakalamole.
Therefore, it means we can come with the same strategy to target our children at school to give them knowledge and education about climate change and how to mitigate.
Kajalo konne jano jana rakana ratakalea no lele zwanang la huruda bana baruna baba lenkodi kolong kanya hori di kato tarabolo lo zidi amanale ho feto kama maemo aloapi ho kadiro jana.
So that this knowledge bahule kaya ne ante ba lebanian.
So that they can grow having this knowledge.
Ebafeh le all the tools seva di koka. So that bahone ho implementa all the strategies more.
So to give them all the tools which they need, e lo horu batla bahone kudi dirisa ma ma filong abale moho ne kara rabola tata jo no.
So we need a concerted effort. We need to invest directly mo di kolon zaro na oni.
Kajalo retsani zo horu retsari sa nen moho meri dira horu retenge ti tu e o moho bo ne basan tane bali mo di kolon.
Eh twabo be di ki lena nola reforestation.
The second point is a program of reforestation.
Reforestation eki hori moro na li eh deforestity.
So with eh reforestation, the fact is that where we find the forests.
Remitigate all the things that are happening in the bula, deforesteds are.
Reten di kato sahara rabola matata adilo zo ke se le hori di bola ya di kota ro.
Investe mo di community in tedi ling around the forest ete o. Ebafeh di seeds, especially za di indigenous trees, horu ba di plante mo to build up our forest.
To invest in members of the community who are nearby those forests eh give them seeds. E lo horu batla ba konu kucha la bahulu kusirelita di kota ro.
Kamu ho.
In that way.
Re kahona ho holda kabono e lo hori eh tu akidi kolon ete za ro na tedi tama mo because of eh eh emission.
So we can then be able to hold the carbon which actually is emitted from cars that are moving by.
And we can benchmark on that because in China it is happening where forests, large forests have been reforested because of the effort za the communities working with the government.
Re kana rata malebela mohusi uka le bakala horu ko China eh bayile ba konu ho investa katsela ensin jalo ele kato emolemo. Eni eba tusa horu ba konu kusirelita eh lo kudira horu di kota boni di zulepe le ho kula kape.
Ki itu melo kape bili konalemo iguan tenka ho fa bo maspa le especially bo me ya ra di tata tse ukeka bili.
I'm very thankful for this bill because there is some sections where it actually points to the fact that eh the municipalities and people such as ministers can be given some authorities.
Ki tla go problem ya town planning.
Now, I'm coming to the town planning problem.
E lo hori it is not centered around issue ya sustainability.
E ilen horu tota ioneha eh aman ho chilele eh le kanya hori eh ma ema araba tangana anza le tenga zulete pele.
Re haribo na ho zena ka motsoa ro na oju betina. Konali development eba eza ya di paving, moba tenzeng di karate.
For an example, when you walk into Jobitan, you'll see there is some development there eh related to paving.
Yes. Mo lo hori konu konu plantu ali di kare along mo di zele.
And then they were also planting trees on the sides of by the roadside.
These are the programs se lo hori di kolon zaro na bana barona ka kompi ta go di kolon. Kahu planta di trees in our townships.
These are some.
Therefore, town planning leone etuansintagrite bana ba bo li mo prosessi ya horu enshora hori ma kesin aru na ho plantu ali tree.
These are some of the wonderful eh programs which we can actually engage our students in their school to actually use it as a competition where they can plant trees and then they can be able to actually contribute to town planning with these particular matters and actions.
Eh ya bo felo ki S S A Amigwe impact ya who mover into renewables.
The last one has already been alluded to, and this is moving on to the use of renewable energies.
Even most countries, they know, hori, they cannot move faster to renewables at the expense of the economy.
Di na hadili di ntsi dia yitso horu kaba kekeba feto kala kabona ko kudrisa eh mata afetwa ngidiloza tla ho kabuna ko na ko faila eh batoko mo loha ekonomi.
We pilezo bakati hori eh ekonomi ya ro na rechebile di provinces edinte di chwana lebo Mpumalanga and other provinces se lo hori ekonomi ya so na it dependa mo tla ho ya mahar.
So my appeal is we look at some of the provinces like Mpumalanga. Their economy actually depends a lot on vegetation and things such as those.
Therefore, we must be sensitive eh to the consequences of the linting. Re introduce eh di renewable series eh ini in a way eh lo hori eh ha affecti the economy eh negative.
So we must be very sensitive and try and introduce the renewable energy matters. Eh se lo horu kadi kita di ama ekonomi ya renaka zela esasiama.
Eh ki zo neto se zene keba ta wodisinya re lewo hile tata eh malo ka parlament.
These were all of my inputs that I wanted to make, and I want to say thank you very much for members of parliament.
Eh. Kuzoro M D Mba. La teta. So kokala ndibulisana na parlamenta ngobobans.
I would like to greet all of you from parliament eh in general.
Hey, oko ntena fika na la bekleksto pe joetin.
I am so happy that you finally came here in class to open Jobitan.
Asas bangaba na olngano lungaga tindbe ngaga lau pe laana.
I so wish that the thirst that I've been having eh all along since now.
Singanu plasi ma to te singanu luli ma.
I would really like to have a farm and I would really love to.
Ya bonban di tindbe ngaga nbe lengwef.
Look at me now, I am so old.
Se tembe le ku banduana ogundi trainile ka kula banduana ba traini.
We are relying on the children that I have trained.
Ba di baboni senze indi ma bangen malim.
I will show them how to do it and then they take over.
Eh di sheling egnwa di painji.
I'm sitting with a lot of books at my house.
Di velio funda no plasi.
I've studied how to run a farm.
Nom sebenzi okokba ingulu bele funaki ken toni.
And how to actually feed the pigs.
Ibe non di zale lituend.
So that the pig can give me more um more pigs.
Di pasi lena zeni luzu ngwa di tse.
I have passed, but all of those are at home with with dust.
Inde di jongle ongo ogundi pelewa lika esha.
The only thing, the only thing I'm seeing now is that I'm closer to my grave.
Di na mato daban dambana onosi isi.
I have men and women that I'm with at this point.
Esi velo gbagandisi konda nenoba si sebenzi farmer.
We wanted to start to start a. We wanted to start, to start a farm. But things are very difficult here in Jobbiton. At some point, only five people were taken from the group. And they were given a farm. I went to that farm with the parliamentarians from. I asked them questions that they couldn't even answer. They couldn't even resolve an issue of the previous farmer. Those people who were given the farm are back with nothing. And others even died. With no results and no fruits to be buried. We are asking from the National Assembly to please. Can you give us farms where we can plant and farm? We were given a land from the mine. From Hartz to Beaufort and Stillfontein. And then Chinese were given that land. And my thing is Chinese are going to be eating from underground and will be eating from the top where we will be farming. That as well has not even come to life. We don't know where we will actually get the land to farm. I am begging you, please, come to our rescue. This committee is very big. We have a committee from Beaufort. All of them, they come to us. We are the umbrella board here in Jobbiton. We are pleading with you, we are begging with you. Thank you so much. I have an English name that is Zorro, but my name is Mndimba. There you go. Thank you. I did say from the beginning that I am very good in all the languages.
No, I did not say that.
Hi, but that's what you mean, Godwinje Jeperson.
No, I did not say that.
But that's what you mean, oh, should I say you're the dog of the game?
I, you must say.
You're the dog of the game.
You must say I'm multilingual.
No, but you are good in all languages. Okay, the Jeperson says he is multilingual. Meaning he is the dog of the game in all the languages. Thank you.
Okay, let me check if there are further takers. Let me check if there are further takers, are there people who still want to speak to us? We really enjoy being here, quite frankly, we can leave at five. Yeah, so why would you want to go when it's raining? We must talk about this rain. Okay, let's take few more hands. We should be able, we should close the two. Okay, let's agree that I'm taking the last round. Agreed? So if there's anyone who does not, who wants to speak now, it is your opportunity to raise your hand. Failure which is three. Is two. One. And this is the last round. Agreed? Wonderful. Mister Ramar, you have noted the issues that concern you. Colleagues, I know that you are, you are noting all these issues that are being raised. Before I make a commitment, I want to be sure if you are noting them. Because there are issues that relates to. Yeah, said in Santeri, the security department is irrelevant.
And others, we must refer to relevant departments.
Including issues that relates to services of service delivery. Issues that relates to bylaws. Dumping sites. Deforestation and reforestation. The painting of grass. And all these other issues, be rest assured that we are going to write to the municipality and demand reports.
It is our duty, you elected us for that.
Yeah, to provide oversight on the systems of government.
We will also respond to the issue regarding the renewable energy. Greetings. My name is Velide Mponggo. Greetings to you, honorable chair. And the honorable members of the committee. I don't have a lot to say.
But I have a problem.
I have a problem with the, the way our children are raised. We can say everything, but if the children are not treated well. It is a challenge to our country, we don't know where it is heading to. As you can see, at the moment, we have this social challenges. They, our children are no longer attending school, they drink alcohol.